...getting married. And he's got notorious insurance. And speaking of, he doesn't like to get his back down towards Wallop. They were like, what? The first Thursday and Tuesday, what? He said, great. Yeah. I would like to explain what he was all about.
The May 20th, 2024 Auburn City Council workshop will be called to order. The first item of businesses, the FY25 Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So you do have the FY25 bond breakdown for capital improvement projects that we presented before you. You've had that for some time now. We also did a CIP plan. Based on the CIP plan, these were the priorities that staff had identified as items to move forward with the bond. You'll see in that one pager that you have on the capital improvement plan, there's the section that's the bonds, which is totaling 13 million. 690,750. We'll need to add 1 million to that. That's the $1 million request from the school department. And then you'll see the items of 2,081,500. Those were the items that we identified, that we're finding other means for now to fund. And I say for now, the two that we're setting aside from that, which is listed as special financing, would be the revaluation and then the engine five apparatus replacement. What we've decided to do on those two items is that you'll see a future order, which will be to direct the city manager to move forward with engaging in a contract for the revaluation services, as well as a contract to approve the engine five replacement. Those will allow us to move forward in those projects. The engine five replacement, as the chief had mentioned when we talked about the CIP plan, we could be almost three years out from receiving that fire apparatus. So this gets, allows us to get that started. However, it will require an order from you to direct the manager to negotiate and engage in that contract, so that that work could be underway, which means that when this comes time for funding, when the payment is due, there will be a requirement that you'll need to move forward with those, either applying a bond or applying other means that the city may have to be able to fund those. So that's the steps we have to take place, we have to move forward with on those. We can go through these line items. It's a short list. I do have staff that's available to answer questions. I know I received information from a few of you regarding Merrill Road. And so we will have, well, hopefully we'll have Dan Goyette here in a little bit. He's coming from, he'll be here, he's on his way, but he'll be talking about road reconstruction. So if we can, I'd like to talk about some of those other items first, and that'll give Dan a chance to get here. Are there any questions regarding the airport two items? Those two items, one of them is a matching funds. Well, I'll take that back. Both of those are matching dollars with the city of Lewiston. One of those lined items is the match requirement for the congressional direct funds that we received for the hangar project. Other component is the pavement that's required for that hangar project. That pavement project will then allow for not just that one hangar, but future expansion hangars moving forward. And these are the T-hanger type hangars up at the airport. So any questions about either one of those two projects? Councilor Weisner and I both serve on that board. We can certainly answer any questions. Those two projects are moving forward. Work is underway. And again, those are, so in the Louis, city of Lewiston CPI, you'll find those are matching dollars in the city of Lewiston. All right. Next, we'll move to city clerk. This is the restoration request that we make annually for the records. When a prior city clerk gave her budget recommendation, she went over what that restoration does for some of our records. We have a statutory mandate to make sure that we are maintaining those records. We move, we always put in for 100,000. Often 50,000 is what gets approved. It just means it takes us that much longer to get, get these restored. Right now, I'm still sitting at the 100,000. Council will be able to, you know, we can have discussions regarding that. Emily's familiar with restoration. She's done that in the city of South Portland, and so she can certainly answer any questions you have regarding the restoration initiative.
Counsel apply.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a question just about this all along. I guess I understand the budget request and what has been granted in years past. I guess my question is, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think I saw this was like a five-year program. Was it in the five-year CIP or is it just every single year it's requested? So I guess my question is, what do we gain as a city by doing this faster as opposed to more slowly? If we were to give you 50,000 instead of 100, what are we foregoing as a city? What efficiencies are we possibly losing?
Yes, it's on.
Thank you, counselor. To answer those questions, the city does have statutory obligations to preserve these records and maintain them permanently. And their deterioration over time does occur with these records. They are currently being housed in a fireproof vault facility. So we are slowing down their deterioration, which is going to occur without preservation of them. The vendor we use, you know, preserves them into acid-free binding, and so that they will not continue to deteriorate. But the condition that they're in right now, they, they are in a statute that they do need to be preserved over time. It's just going to take that much longer to do so.
And it's hard to really say how much will get done, because it depends on the state of the records. And so we usually will have someone that they'll review that. We send those out, they come back, and it depends on what's the state of those. And I think we do a combination. We don't just do, you know, as far back in our archive, we do some that we're trying to maintain as well. So the ones that are in better shape are getting maintained now, and then we always do a reach back to try to bring some of the archived documents into compliance.
So are they just being digitized? Is that what they're, are they, what do they do?
So the actual record themselves, they have to be preserved into binding and to acid-free plastic, you know, so that they're not, they don't continue to deteriorate from the element. And there is a digitization process, but maintaining that actual record is what we need to be able to issue it.
Gotcha. So it's actually the original record saved?
Yes.
How many times do we have to do 100,000 before we ever catch up?
I don't think you will. Honestly, I don't think there's going to be a catch-up. It's because we're doing records that are happening right now, and then we take some of those dollars and we reach back and grab older records. But Sue had given a report on this probably three, four years ago, and the thought then was that we will always be grabbing, going back and grabbing additional files, because there's just, we're that far. Even though we've been very, I feel we've been consistent in some of the funding in the last five to eight years, probably, there were many years where it wasn't done. So I'm not sure when the end is on this. It means that it may be able to be reduced. You know, we could, if we do 50, then typically what we're doing is we're grabbing the most recent records and restoring those and not doing a lot of the, the reach back to the, we still have some records that are probably early 1900s that are still being done.
So, Mr. Manager, if this is going to be an ongoing expense, why are we putting this in a CIP bond and not including this in the budget? If, if there's no end in sight for this, it would seem going forward, it should be a budget item.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree. I think this is where it has landed. I think we can make some movement in the next budget to do that, like we did this year with some other projects or expenses that were more operating. This is one of those that we, staff talked about, when do we move this into operating? And our thought is that we'll, we'll work to try to do that next year.
Yeah, I would agree with that, because it seems like it's an ongoing operational expense, and we're going to be paying the debt service on something that has no end.
Another question. Where do we keep all, I mean, we must be buying more than just putting them in a binder and putting them in a digit or something, but are we putting them in one building, five buildings? Or we've been doing this quite a while now. There's got to be something better than $100,000 every year or 50,000. You know, even if we have to look forward to buying a bank building somewheres, would be better than spending this kind of money every year.
Well, I think, you know, I guess the response to that is, one, they're here in the building. There is a need, and this has been in previous capital projects, is to enhance the vault that we currently use. It's not, you know, we, there's a, there's a vault that's used within that space, storage area space. But the entire storage area needs to be fireproofed, and it's not. And so there is, there has been some estimates that have been done on what it would take to get that building, that space rather, where it needs to be. I, you know, I have not looked at that again. I don't think it's, it's not in the CIP five-year plan. It's one where we'll need to take a look at it. The thought is, in the next few years, we have police moving out of the building, and that gives us a good opportunity to really assess the entire facility. And based on that assessment, we'll really determine where should we be enhancing some of our storage. There are some storage that is done in the basement of the, the old building, of this building, but on the old section that does have a sprinkler, it is, you know, it's just not the best protection for some of those records. So we are looking to see where it's best for that enhancement.
Just to follow up, the, that's an important issue. Am I understanding correctly that that's somewhat a slightly different issue, in that if we had those procedures, protection and in a vault can slow down the detriment, but we still have to do restoration?
Yes, that's correct.
I was wondering if we could just bite the bullet in one year, not this year, but maybe next year, and just hire somebody to come in and get it all squared away, and then it becomes an annual budget thing instead of a bond issue, but bite the bullet and spend whatever it takes to get everything. I mean, I don't know how feasible or realistic that is, or if there are even companies that do that.
I think that's a great idea, and I think that's something that Emily and I can take some time and look at. We'll have that prepared for you next year. We'll have a better sense of this facility next year as well, as we looked at where, where departments will be transitioning to and, and what will we have for space. And I think that, you know, like I said, we put 100,000 in. I think if the council, as you're going through the work tonight, and you say, well, why don't we just do 50,000 to make sure that we're covering some of our immediate needs, then we can easily do that. And then we'll save the rest for, as the mayor mentioned, working it into operating, or as Councilor Whiting said, is there a larger project here that we could look to maybe accomplish this?
Counsel apply.
And I guess just to, to sum up where I started, I would support bringing this down to 50. I think, given, I don't know if this is the form we're actually going through in suggesting numbers, but I suppose on the record, I'd like to say it. Of all the years that we're going to experience, this is one where I think we, we have to be tight. And if 50,000 keeps us, you know, status quo, I think this is the year to do that. I don't know if this is the year to overfund something so that we can make up distance. I think maybe next year, if we're approving a budget that has smaller increases, then that would be something to consider. But I would support a $50,000 CIP line item for this.
Is there any opposition to removing this down from 100 to 50,000? Counsel Gary?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What was the cost of last year? Was it, did we make, did we spend the whole 50 or 100,000 we gave them last year?
Kelsey will look that up to see where I am. I don't think Emily's thinking it was a part of that. I think it was 50,000 and we'll look it up. I think it was pretty close.
And then, since I've been off and on the council since 2000, there was a few years where we didn't put much of anything into restoration of the vital records. And right now, there is a movement to do genealogy and looking for records. And if they're in shape that we can't maneuver them, then the people will have to wait till they're in shape. And we will get, we do get money from people when they request certain records. And I also know from being up in the legislature and talking, and doing stuff with the, with the library up there is, the sooner we can get a climate-controlled atmosphere for the records, that will slow down and potentially stop any further destruction of the very, yeah, very brittle, sensitive records, because it is a very time-taking chore to do this. And you can't just rush through it. The newer ones you, I mean, in recent years, you can. These things that are brittle and really in tough shape, you can't.
Anything further from the council on this item?
Just to your question, Mr. Mayor, I've been reflecting on the, what we want, or feel we are able to pay this year versus what we're going to need to be paying in the coming few years. And I'm, I'm open to having an option of reducing this to 50,000, but we're already under what was originally projected and approved in our five-year plan. So I'm wondering if, you know, maybe we put that on as a placeholder for now, but I'm, I'm also in support of having it there if we still need to do the work.
Yeah, just one point of clarification. I think the counselors that have, that have served on the council over a number of years jump in here if I misspeak, but I think that the actual CIP bond is always substantially less than what's approved in the five-year CIP plan. In effect, that five-year CIP plan is a prioritization method, but I'm not sure we want to say we're under anything yet, because we haven't actually determined what we're going to approve for this year's bond. Anything further on this item? Mr. Manager, you move forward?
Yeah, we can move forward. We did spend the full 50,000 last year, so that has been expended. Next one would be fire, and this is engine two reconditioning. Deputy Chief Feifield's here, can answer questions regarding why we're doing the reconditioning of engine two apparatus, if we have any questions on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could. I don't really have any questions as to why we would do this. I guess my only thought is just about understanding, is 250 the full cost of the project? Are we bonding 75% of it and paying a certain percentage out of our operating budget? That's my only question. But as far as why we would do this, I think I trust you guys.
So that is the full project cost. So there, typically when you're doing a refurbish, the truck is going back to the original vendor, having a lot of work, electrical work, bodywork, and then it goes out to the, the engine and transmission companies to do additional work on that. So it's, it's three different vendors and for one project.
And one follow-up. Are these, is this number based on an actual, like, RFP quote, or is it based on past experiences with the similar projects?
So what I did is I took the particular truck that we want to refurbish, engine two, and I had an appointment with the original vendor that we bought it from. They assessed the truck, they put it up on a lift, went through it, and gave me an estimate.
Anything further on this item? Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's the time turnaround timeframe for having this work done and having it back in service?
About three to four months. All right, moving on. IT has a security camera project. This is $90,000. We probably receive multiple requests throughout a year for an added camera at either a facility or for security enhancements, rec facilities with the changing of some of the facilities we have there, and being able to view out to some of our public gathering areas for safety and security reasons. And then we also have some parks that have recently requested some additional cameras. Derek's here, who's over facilities, can answer questions there. You have some of that information in your detail sheet as well.
The 911 center or the police station have the ability to see these real time?
They do, yeah.
And we're recording these for some period of time?
For some period of time, yeah.
Anything else on this item?
LA 911 had two requests that came in to us. One of them was related to the server infrastructure replacement for 150,000, and the other one was regarding 1,250,000 for their facility replacement. There's still some, a lot of discussions that need to happen regarding the facility. In the bond that was done regarding the public safety facility, there was language that was put in there for any additional costs to the elimination of the existing building and the new public safety building. Obviously, eliminating central fire station brings on that added cost for now, where does the communications center go? That still needs to have more conversation. So you're not seeing that request in this, because it could be added to the public safety bond when we go out to bond for that. So the only request in here is their server replacement. All right. Moving forward, we have planning and permitting, two items here. One of them is dangerous buildings and junkyard cleanups, and the other is the comprehensive plan program. You'll see that this number had been adjusted from when you originally saw this document. And I think it was $70,000 was added to this, because we had a $70,000 reduction in another line item when we received some better prices for equipment. So, so that was added to this request, if you remember, in the comprehensive plan. I think Eric's initial request, Eric, you can come on up. Eric's initial request for comp plan, this is the comp plan program, was a lot higher than, than what was funded. I believe Eric, was it 400,000?
Ah, yes, I think it was.
And so we know that this might take, we might go into two fiscal years for the comp plan program. So we have partial funding for this year and then partial for the upcoming year as well. And so, and then dangerous building and junkyard cleanups, we've done, Eric's done a great job with the junkyard cleanups. Him and his team have really worked on that. Some of you that have been on the council for a while know that we had probably three, maybe four junkyards that were long time, court, dragged out battles on some of these junkyards that have now been cleaned up. Eric's team did a great job making sure, getting those across the finish line. We have a couple more that are, we know that are coming, that will need to address. And then we have a few dangerous buildings that will, that will also need to be addressed. And so, so these funds will help cover some of those costs.
It's open. I would just add that the 400,000 was for, for you as a council to have money available during your term to choose things in the comp plan to implement, implement, and also for the, the goal of rewriting a new comp plan. So the 220 is enough to do the rewrite of the new comp plan, but doesn't leave anything remaining if there was something in the existing plan that you wanted to fund during this, this term. Our estimates were 180 to 220 for a new comp plan, and the higher number includes a lot more public participation, which we thought would be desirable.
Okay. Thanks, Eric. All right. Police mobile data terminals, we, the current mobile data terminals that are in the police cruisers have exceeded their warranty. And so one thing that we do with the MDTs is that they're, they're all replaced at one time. That's the best method to do that. So all the warranties are up, because if you don't, you're going to either have different mounting brackets or different pieces of equipment in cruisers, and it's just easier just to do this at once. So, oh, I forgot. So that's, that's that item. Deputy Chief Kugel's here, he can certainly speak to any questions you might have regarding that.
How long ago did we have to swap out, do what we do, did?
Yeah, I'll let Tim speak to that.
Thank you. The current MDTs was the question, how long ago did we replace them? Five years ago. So they've reached the end of their five-year term.
How many cars do we have to retrofit?
We're replacing 19 MDTs.
And how many cars do we actually have on the road?
We have 28 vehicles total. Not all of them have MDTs, not all of them are marked. So we have 20, typically have 20 MDTs that are out being used on the road, so we're replacing 19 of them this year. One was replaced, needed to be replaced last year and was.
And then when we get new cruisers, this, there, we swap out the materials from one cruiser, from the old one to the new one? Or do we have to buy brand-new equipment for those?
As far as the MDTs? Yeah, we, we reuse them. Sometimes the mounting brackets might need to be replaced, depending on if we, if there's been a change by the manufacturer in the configuration of the vehicle. But the MDT itself and the mount, the upper mount, we call it, is swapped from year to year until it, you know, until it's replaced.
One thing that Kelsey and I will be working on, so we do have funds that come in that go into a special revenue account for when a outside entity hires police officers. There's a, there's also a fee for a cruiser if they use that. It was originally set up so that that could be used towards the vehicle replacement. Obviously, the price of vehicle replacements, you never, you know, you know, it might take you along, you know, some time before you're even able to apply it to one cruiser. And so the thought is, this is another one of those items that it's every five years, this is being replaced. We know the maintenance schedule on this, the replacement schedule. This is an item that should be moving towards operating, and so we'll either do it through operating, or we'll take a look and we'll come before you on that special revenue account and make a recommendation on that special revenue account, that those funds could easily transfer and cover that cost.
Counsel apply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do these units get as a resale value, or are they just toast?
We can sell some of them back, and they, they will refurbish them, take them and trade in. It depends on how old they are. Are they getting this old? Probably not so much. But we've actually had, we've, we've needed, like an SRO needed a computer in the past, and we've been able to buy a refurbished one. A tough book, Panasonic tough book. So we've done some things like that when, kind of outside of the, the regular ones that go in the cars, if you will.
What kind of data does this keep for you?
The, the MDTs, at least it's everything that we, that the officers do in the field and in the station. It's their records, it's their dispatch module when they're dispatched to a call. Everything's put through that MDT from, from the LA 911 center. Just, there's, everything that we do is through that MDT, I guess. Accident reporting, citations, the camera system now runs through the MDT as far as what they, for a display. The old units used to have a display, a separate display in the car. That's now funneled through the laptop display.
So there's no way that we can have something bigger someplace that takes this in instead of having to buy 19 of these every five years?
So this is like taking something like this and putting it in the cruiser so they have access to it. There's no real memory being stored on that. It's just, it's just the platform to receive that information for the officer to make the entries and be able to view it. But it's no, it's, there's no storage, you know, in those cruisers. Those are all being done on the cloud. Those are all being done on the cloud.
It's also important to understand that the data that's coming to these is coming from many different systems. And some of them are not City of Auburn systems, some of them aren't even State of Maine systems, they're national systems. And so think of this as the way to present that information to the officer in the field from those many different systems. And it, having worked for all my time in patrol without these, going back would be a disaster. A police officer today could not do their job without disinformation in the field.
I was going to say, we wouldn't be able to go back. We'd be on that point of no return, back to our days with paper accident reports and everything else.
And we're talking about, just about $7,000 to $7,500 per unit, which doesn't seem too extreme for what it does.
Yeah, and that includes, that's, part of that is a keyboard, a standalone keyboard, that, you know, detachable keyboard or whatnot that's lighted.
Brackets, all that stuff, yeah.
And these are ruggedized units. It's not like a standard laptop, they, that wouldn't survive a week in a police car.
No. Yeah, they're all military-grade or similar type product.
Our first MDTs were regular laptops. They didn't last very long, so.
And you had a bond every year?
Yeah, you bungee corded them to keep them from shaking every time you had a bump. So it was quite a sight. But we had them, we had them in the cruisers.
Few of them did.
Yeah. So we've come a long way. Thanks, Tim. I'm going to jump over engineering. Derek, can you just text Dan to see where he might be at? And then, well, Derek, I guess you're up. So I'll have you come up. Scott can text him, so. So we have facilities in engineering, I'm sorry, in energy. So we'll jump over engineering. Again, I think Derek talked about some of these regarding the Auburn Hall boiler, some mechanical upgrades. We'll talk, we can talk about Engine 2 station reconstruction. This myth, if those of we're on the council recall, we're doing Engine 2 in phases. And so, this is the second phase for the Engine 2 reconstruction. And then the, the last two items that Derek has have to do with the library and the boiler replacements there. So, questions regarding these? Derek, is there anything that we need to, anything that might have changed since you did your presentation?
Nope.
How old is the library boiler?
2006.
It's not quite 20 years even.
Yeah, it's not. These boilers are all.
Just bring that mic closer.
Oh, sorry. These boilers, they don't make them anymore. So we can't even get parts for them, unfortunately. And our techs have been there constantly working on them. So there's no other way really than replacement at this time. So this, this number includes a full replacement of the whole boiler room, essentially pumps all the equipment, more efficient, all of it. So it's a complete overhaul for efficiency and also to get us to the next, hopefully 25, 30 years.
Are we, are we, is this a product that's going to be supported over that kind of time? I mean, it's a company that's going to be around, that's been around for a long time?
Absolutely.
Because obviously the one before was before your time, I'm sure.
It was, yeah, yeah.
It's not around anymore, I'm guessing.
Correct, yeah.
I'm sure it was a good price at the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Derek's barely been working with the techs regarding Auburn Hall's boiler as well. There was no real redundant system put in place here, and so.
That was my other question, is that's over 20 years?
Twenty years, yeah.
Yeah, so as a value engineering measure, when they built this facility, they cut one of the boilers out. So we're here with, yeah, we're here with one boiler. So we've had cracked sections. We've just been lucky that they've been in the off-season because had this happened in the winter, we would have had to shut the building down because there'd be no heat. So this plan will add redundancy. We'll have three boilers, again, all new pumps, equipment. Currently, this is non-condensing, meaning we're still venting through the chimney. We'll go to, you know, a condensing boiler, so it'll be much more efficient and save us money. So there'll be an ROI on it as well.
Any questions about Engine 2? So that is underway. You're going to receive a document, probably in a workshop, we're going to give you an update. I think it's after the Public Safety Committee's meeting, which is June, I think, 5th or 6th. And so we'll have a meeting after that. And it's going to give you a really good timeline of not just the public safety facility, but Engine 2 facility as well as the PAL Center construction. When is construction starting? When's the bond process start on each of these? And I think it'll give you a really good snapshot of where we're at currently.
Counsel apply.
Yes, thank you. I did have a question. I think it's just understanding information. I'm staring at a document that we had sent from you maybe a month ago with all the different CIP projects. And on this document, it says Engine 2 reconditioning, $250,000, and then here $2 million.
So that's, one is the apparatus and one is the building. Yeah, both are Engine 2, one's apparatus, one's the reconstruction.
And this year's CIP request for fiscal 2025, $2 million is a percentage of the project? What's the full cost of the project?
I think, you know, Derek's probably been whittling this down as best as he can, but I'm thinking it's going to come in just under $7 million.
Somewhere in that range, around $7 million, yeah. And we should have that number back if all times out appropriately sometime around December, January. Just in time for the next budget, so we'll have a, a real number.
All right, let's move on to public works. Scott, if you want to come up. Scott certainly had a lot of additional pieces of equipment that was in the request. You see, we really whittled this down to just a couple pieces of apparatus essential. But all of, all of Scott's equipment, all costs a decent amount of money. So that's why, you know, as we went through the replacement, the Vector truck was their highest priority for a need that they had. And then, and then obviously, you know, replacing our plow trucks is the other real, real important element that you see on here. And one thing that we have been doing, kind of an audit of, is just some light replacements for our parks. It's something that hasn't been done. If it's done, it's only because, you know, there's been damage to a pole and we have to replace that pole. And so what we're hoping to do is to get this more, again, this is one that I'm hoping you're going to see more in an operational budget in future years because it's an ongoing maintenance that we need to replace some of these, the lighting in some of our areas that make it very difficult for our community pedestrian walkability to access. Some of it has to do with right back here, the alley that goes between this back courtyard over to Main Street. It's a dark alley. We can do a lot better on that. The mayor had brought that forward to me at one point as a concern. And so the staff kind of talked about that and took a look to see what we could do. One thing that you're seeing in this CIP request, which I think is different, I don't think we did this last year, is you're seeing where we're, we're putting areas of maintenance and maintenance replacement all within public works. So putting areas that have to do with building infrastructure under facilities where vehicles in the past may have been with each department. Well, we want those to really be within public works. And so if you saw when we did these under operating, you'll see the public works had a lot of the vehicle replacements. Because I really need public works and their fleet team to say, yes, that vehicle replacement's needed and not just it came up on my list as a department manager and I want to make sure I get that scheduled because it's been three years or five years. Rather than, what's the status of that actual vehicle? And we're getting a good report from the fleet team on that vehicle and warranties that they're, they're monitoring. So really puts us in a better place when it comes to a lot of our equipment replacement. I'm sure you have some questions regarding some of this for Scott. The other, this is where we see one of the changes that was made. I met with Donna at Park Rec, and Donna had shared regarding where some of the numbers had come in on a previous minibus for a purchase. That's why we were able to move that $70,000 out of this line item and move it to comp plan. And so that minibus has a little less than that. Still moving forward with one, but we didn't need that full amount now that we saw what the most recent cost had come in at. Scott's ready to answer any questions.
Any questions on public work? Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How many, how many passenger vehicles does the rec department have? What are their ages? Because I thought they was, they've got three, I thought.
Well, Donna's here, she can come up. We have, we do have two minibuses, but we also have a van. And the van was a donated van from, that PD had been using.
Yes, so we have two minibuses, there are 14 passenger vans or buses. One of them's used for senior programming, and that's the one that we just replaced because our current one is barely passing inspection. The other one's used for a before and after care program. It's fine for now, but in the next, I can see in the next year or two, we might need to replace it. We use for PAL programming in our grab-and-go program, we currently use the PIS van, but then we also use that for PAL activities as well. So we have, we have two minibuses, but we have one van that's also 14 passenger.
And is this new passenger vehicle going to have a handicap lift so that seniors that are mobility challenged can get an off and on as well as whatever young person that attend your rec activities?
The current one that we have is handicapped, yes. It's handicap accessible.
But this new vehicle that you're talking about getting?
We, the one that we just purchased for FY '24?
I think she's talking about the one that's in the budget today.
Oh, no, that one, it would not be, no. Not that price.
Yeah, we have one that's being replaced now.
Yes.
With the one that we currently have. So there will be one that's available.
And the one that is in the process of being replaced, it's not the one in this budget, is the one that's used for senior programming that has the handicap accessibility?
Yes.
Does that answer your question, Counsel Gary?
And be mindful too, these are, they're interchangeable. We use these because sometimes we have larger groups going and so there might be.
At times there are two, the senior programmers are taking both buses. Or if PAL has a larger group, we take both buses.
Right, that's what I was getting at because I know there's some seniors that would love to go on a trip, but they've hit their max limit, so then they got to wait for cancellations. And it'd be great if we had multiple drivers. But then again, I think, don't you have issues with finding enough drivers to drive the vehicles?
Yes, I think that's a problem for everybody is finding a bus driver, yeah. It is challenging, and I think having a safer vehicle would make staff more comfortable driving a group of people.
Thank you.
Anything else for public works? Counsel apply.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question about the walkway light replacement? So it sounds like this is the first year that this has been requested for in the CIP budget. What kind of impact do you think that has, rough approximate percentage on all the lights and poles that need to get replaced? What does $100,000 do?
So that is going to replace lights on Main Street. So this stretch out through here where we put all the Christmas decorations, which we have a very hard time with the GFCI staying out and working. It would replace those. I'd have to look back on my notes, but I think it's from here to New Auburn, I think is what the plan was. And then part of that also is replacing them from Festival Plaza to Bonnie Park, which is well-needed. And they will be upgraded to LED lights. So it'll be much brighter and make it a lot safer to walk in that area.
And I was going to make a note of that. I think this is a safety, there's a safety component to this as well, which I think is important to note.
And did you say that's going to also light up, up back here? Because I.
Yes.
We have to get a plan as soon as police leave, that's going to, we're going to need.
Yeah, we'll tie that in with the Festival Plaza Riverwalk project.
Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on the mode of the lights, can you put it under your radar to get some more lighting for like the, like the community gardens, specifically like on Newbury Street? Because that is one of the larger gardens, of the three gardens that we have so far.
Yes, we can certainly look at that. Maybe in future budgets, because I think what we put in here this year will cover what we just talked about.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Scott. The last, last three items is under transportation, the traffic calming pedestrian safety. That one is, we don't have anything specific to this. This is some that there's usually requests throughout the year. Dennison might be a good example where we had an opportunity to jump on a project that DOT was doing. Using some funds like this and having it available, going to DOT and say, we have, we have money available right now to go ahead and jump on a project. By doing that though, Dan was able to actually have that incorporated into DOT's budget, and we didn't need to spend any money on it. So it's having that money so we can leverage it and then be able to expand on a project that we might have coming up. We are applying for, or we did apply for some pedestrian safety grant funding through Bureau of Motor Vehicle. And so we won't need to use some of this enforcement money that we were looking at. We'll be able to use that grant. But this will be another area that when we do that grant, what it will provide us is some good data of where we need to actually improve some enhancements for crossings as well as some enforcement activity. So we'll look at bringing those together. The Court Street bicycle pedestrian improvements, we can go ahead and remove that 150. So that has been part of a congressional earmark request that was done that we teamed up with the state to put in a request, and this is for all of Court Street. So we can remove that, that request. And then the LETC bus replacement, again, the $50,000 goes towards our full cost share on a bus replacement for LETC. So it builds in an account and then, and then we draw from that. And I could tell you that, you know, I think we are a few years out from replacing a bus. And the moment I do that, there's a bus that gets in an accident. So I'm not going to tell you, I'm not going to say anything. So, so, but it's an account that's there. There's times when, and again, this is leveraging our contribution of $50,000 with Lewiston's contribution of $50,000, which goes to LETC. LETC then works with the feds to be able to leverage funds. So we, we receive a bus at a much reduced price when, when we, when we go through this process. Even though we partner, we contract with Western Main Transportation for transit for the, both cities, both cities actually own the buses. They provide the drivers. So these are buses that are owned by the cities of Lewiston and Auburn. We've made a pretty strong effort in the last couple of years to enhance the buses that we're bringing on so that they're all part of the same, similar bus type and style, which has helped us with maintenance and being able to pull parts from another bus when needed. However, we know we have a bit of a break here before we have an immediate replacement, and that'll allow the board to really consider, Counsel Cowan is on LETC, will allow the board to really consider what an electric bus option will be moving forward. Western Main has explored this as well. We know that's a completely enhanced charging system for those, but the federal government is shifting on what funding they will make available. So we have to align with that to receive those funds. And so, so we're working through that. We've recommended a couple locations in Auburn for charging stations. So that way, that could enhance, as the state's looking for locations, we're, we're offering up space so that that could be a potential charging location for us regardless of whether or not we stay with Western Main or another vendor bids on, on our transit system. We'll have, we'll have that built in. So that's our goal with that. So we're constantly looking at that. Questions on, on that amount, transportation? So now we're down. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Court Street, you said you, we could eliminate that. I, I would hope that we wouldn't eliminate all of it because there are, I know there's other places in this city that is in need of money. So I would, I would hope that we would at least keep half of it in there. I could pick out a dozen. keep half of it in there. I could pick out a dozen places where we need some help for crossing and making things safer.
So Counsel Walker, the suggestion would be to move the seventy-five thousand up to the previous line for the traffic calming and pedestrian safety and increase that from one hundred to one seventy-five?
What I was, he was gonna eliminate the Court Street totally. I would keep seventy-five.
Yeah.
I would eliminate Court Street from it.
Yeah, and I'm agreeing with that. And I think that you could just move the seventy-five thousand up to the traffic calming and pedestrian safety line and eliminate Court Street and increase the previous item up to one seventy-five.
Thank you.
So are there thoughts about that from the council?
Mr. Mayor, can I recommend we pause CIP and then we move to the Appendix A fees and charges? Dan is on his way. I know he got, he got hung up trying to get here. So I really want Dan Goyette here, our city engineer, to talk about the engineering items. So if we could pause CIP, we would move to the section regarding fees. He might have, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. Before we do that, are there gonna be any questions about the other funds block?
I think those are, those were done either, yeah, those are already complete. I just have them on the list, so you'll see where they are, except for the two items that I mentioned.
Yeah. Is, are there any questions about that? Okay, so let's move on to, we'll set this aside, do the engineering when Mr. Goyette arrives, and we'll move on to Item B, amending Appendix A fees and charges regarding reimbursements, refunds, and waivers.
Yep. Emily, do you wanna come up to? So a couple, couple steps that have happened regarding requests from Counsel Milks and Counsel Walker with a reimbursement request for action that was brought before the, the planning board, uh, planning department, rather. Few things that we had to do to move forward on that. One of them was something that had been a recommendation by our legal counsel was to take the appendix for fees actually out of the ordinance and move them into a standalone appendix that can just be changed, modified, based on an order. It's really difficult for you to make any adjustments to that without it being an ordinance change. And so, and so this was just good practice. And so that's what's being, what was done by you already. Now coming before you is now a means or a mechanism for you to actually be able to reimburse funds. It's just not something that, unless it's specific within ordinance on how that can take place, we're really limited on what we can do. And so there are sections within the ordinance that provided that language to be able to, you have a couple waivers, for an example, on, on the agenda regarding a licensing fee. Well, there's language in there that allows for you to waive that. There was no language that was provided for reimbursement. So Eric and Emily worked on providing this for you. One thing that they did, you'll notice in the, in the document, they pulled all the different sections throughout the appendix, Appendix A that talked about reimbursement, waiver, options, and put those all into one, one section. So it'll be a little more easier to find. Staff still has concerns regarding this, and I think Eric, Eric addressed that, that, you know, this, there's a lot of work that goes involved when a petition or a request comes before the planning department for a zoning change. Eric took a look at what other communities do. No other community provides reimbursement. We're actually under what other communities are charging. And so that's something that we probably should take a look at. I think it's always good for us to go back and look at our fees and see if we are, where we need to be on those. And that'll be a, something that we'll bring forward. Probably by this fall, we'll do that. And we'll have an opportunity to go through that. Staff will do some research, bring those before you. The concern with this one is just that there's a, there's an added cost to the taxpayer, because staff is using their time, which is a taxpayer cost, to do the, the work that's being done through a request. And so that's, that's really why our recommendation would be not to include it, but it is an option you have. However, to do it, you actually have to put the language in to be able to have that authority to make that reimbursement. Yep.
Counsel Milks.
Just to clarify, my, my position on this is, the reason I think that in this particular, based on one situation, was we didn't make a determination as a body. And I think it's fair for a citizen, if they bring something forward, and we, we tabled it, or we, we didn't make a decision, yes or no. If we'd have said no, then I wouldn't, people bring, you pay your fee, you come up, and if we say no, then that's, that's how it works. But we didn't make a determination. So in that sense, I think that this person's entitled to get there, 'cause we didn't answer. And so that's why I'm in favor of giving, so I agree with Mr. Manager, that we shouldn't be giving people money back because they don't like the outcome. But that's the reason that we brought that forward, is that, that in this situation, we didn't make a determination. So...
Counsel Platt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would agree with that, kinda anecdotally to the one example that you're talking about. I think that's fair. We didn't act as a, a council. I will say, the way this is worded, what we're looking at right now, kinda scares me a little bit. I know we're not talking about huge dollar values, but we are using the time of our employees to, to do that. You know, I'm reading one thing here. It says, "In the event that a recipient of a building permit does not undertake any of the building activity associated with a given permit," yada, 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 "they're entitled to some percentage of reimbursement." I'm not sure if someone doesn't take action on a, on a site plan approval, it's the city's position to not accept a fee. So I completely agree with you, Counsel Milks, for the example that we're referencing, but I, I don't really like this language. And I, I guess I agree with the city's recommendation.
So a couple of comments about this. I, I guess the first comment is, I don't know that the intent of the council, and Counsel Walker and Counsel Milks can speak to this, when they brought this forward for a workshop, was to establish reimbursement fees for any types of activities that go through planning and permitting. I think the intent was much narrower, only for zoning and tax, zoning and tax amendments. So that's, that's the first thing I would say. The second thing, I think that Counsel Milks has a good point here. There's a significant danger in these waivers, because as we see from, like, these other waivers we're going to take up tonight, it becomes just a standard practice of putting them on the agenda and approving them as they come forward. They're all a good purpose. And I'm concerned that you're going to have, not only being reimbursing the money for the work that you did, you're going to spend more staff time looking into whether you should give a reimbursement. So if we're going to do this, I think it, it should be much narrower. And the standard should be if the zoning, a tax and map amendment doesn't have a final action by the council, then they could have a reimbursement. And then the last thing I would point out, the way this is written, the, the situation that brought this to the, to council today wouldn't be covered, because the filing for the reimbursements required within thirty days. So I think if you're going to do this, to be able to handle the situation that precipitated this, this needs to be re- some retroactive provision, or you could do this, and then the gentleman that was aggrieved in this case wouldn't be able to file anyways, 'cause more than thirty days has gone by.
Yeah, you're, Mayor, you made several good points here. One, we would make sure that the order that you pass would allow to go back and grab that, that reimbursement. The other piece is that the highlighted section that you see is the zoning and tax amendments, that's the only change, other than some grammar. Those, all those other items is just pulling them from other sections of this Appendix A and bringing it in. I think there might have been a couple grammar items to be, specific regarding plumbing, and actual plumbing might have been highlighted in there. But it's only that highlighted section. So Counsel Platt, the section you talked about?
It's already.
It's already in there. So, yeah. Doesn't mean that it can't be changed later, but it's already in there. The section that we're talking about tonight is just that highlighted section. Sorry to make that clear when I was first talking. The other red line item sections, underlined sections, are all within this document already. You'll see the strike throughs further up in the pages, all brought here. So they're all under one area.
So I guess I would, I would ask Counsel Milks and Counsel Walker, if, if we narrowed this to circumstance under which there's no final action by the council, would that be satisfactory, to, to narrow it so we don't have lots of these, but we take care of the issue that we're trying to solve?
From where I sit, that's certainly what my intention was, is that we didn't make an action, and that therefore, we didn't do what we said we would do. So...
And I agree with that, yes.
Great.
So, so Mr. Manager, you, you have enough information to have staff craft an order to bring before the council?
Yep. I think we're all set.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Anything else on this agenda item?
Just a comment. I agree with the manager that we, we should look at the fees and try and be sort of middle of the pack. We don't have to be the lowest. We shouldn't be the highest. But, you know, we shouldn't be giving away services that are costing us more than the fees.
Right. Yeah. And I think there's, not just with these permits, but there's other market changes regarding some of the work that we do as well. And we've seen that over the years with photocopying, you know, there's laws that change regarding that. So we've, we've come into compliance on those. But I think that there are some other, other items that we should probably take a look at. I think some of our marijuana licenseings, you know, we had done those originally. Some of those have been certainly updated over the years, well, a handful of years that we've had them in place. We probably need to address that as well. It's important to make sure those are staying with, within what our actual costs are. So evaluating what our costs are, ensuring that we are collecting the fees to help offset that's important. So those are areas that we will look at. I'm gonna, we don't have an update right now, so Mayor, we could go into executive session.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest, that, do we have a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Title I MRSA, Section 405, 6D, regarding the school maintenance union contract?
So moved, a second.
All those in favor? It will be in executive session.
He's walking in now, so we'll, we'll come back to it.
Thank you.
The May 20, 2024 Auburn City Council will be called to order. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have the councilors introduce themselves, starting with Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to coming out tonight. My name is Belinda Gary. I'm an Auburn City Councilor at Large.
Rick Whiteing, Ward One City Councilor.
Good evening. Tim Cowan, Ward Two City Councilor.
Steve Milks, Ward Three City Council.
Jeff Heimann, Mayor.
Ben Weisner, City Council, Ward Four.
Leroy Walker, City Council, Ward Five.
Adam Platt, City Council at Large.
Phil Crowell, City Manager.
I'm Anaya Eggy. I'm a student representative and I'm from Ward Four.
Thank you. There are no consent items tonight. The first agenda item will be acceptance of the May 6, 2024 regular city council meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
It's been moved by Council Walker to accept the minutes as written. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Council of Platts. All those in favor? Posed? Motion is adopted. The next item is communications, presentation, and recognition. For the first agenda item, the city clerk will administer the oath of office to our city council student representative, Anaya Eggy.
I, Anaya Eggy, solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and the United States and this state so long as I shall remain a citizen thereof and that will faithfully discharge, for the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent upon me as City Council Student Representative for the City of Auburn, according to said Constitution, the laws of the state, ordinances of the city.
For clarification for the public, Ms. Aiden was going to join us as another student representative, but she has now another commitment and won't be able to participate. So we are still looking for a second student representative to the council. The next item is a proclamation relative to Maine Arbor Week. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, May 19 to May 25, 2024 is Maine Arbor Week. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, provide life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Heimann, Mayor of the City of Auburn, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim May 19 to May 25, 2024, is the celebration of Maine Arbor Week in the City of Auburn. I urge all citizens to celebrate Maine Arbor Week and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. I would also note that Mr. Griswold is here from the Forestry Committee, and he represented us at the celebration in Augusta. Dave?
Yeah, the celebration in Augusta is on Thursday, actually, and we will receive Auburn's 21-year certificate as a Tree City USA. What's now the Community Forest Working Group was formed originally in 2001 is the Lewiston-Auburn Community Forest Board, unique in the state and probably the Northeast and involving two cities. We continue to work with them. We cooperate on a nursery up on the West Auburn Road. Just real quickly, some of the things that we've accomplished recently with the help of Carol Lane, who runs Video Ops and is on the Conservation Working Group. We put together a five-minute video to help homeowners control bittersweet on their home lots, and that's available on the city website. We're going to screen a 20, a 50-minute film on the American chestnut on Thursday at 6 o'clock at the Senior Center. So we invite everybody to come down and learn about the history of the chestnut tree and the American Chestnut Foundation's efforts to reinstate it with genetic improvements. We do have chestnuts in Auburn. I found some as part of the street inventory project, but they're not very good. They've been knocked back and they sprout, and then they get the blight and die back. But that'll be an interesting event for Tree City Week. The other project that we're reinvigorating, we had, we worked with some Bates students a few years ago to develop the plan for a have a listing of significant trees in Lewiston-Auburn, and we'd like to use this week to roll that out. We're soliciting pictures of trees that are in the right of way or visible from the wider way to develop a list, probably a walking tour of the two cities around these trees. And anyone who would like to submit a nominee, my contact information is on the city website under the Community Forest Working Group. And I'd be more than happy to get an email if someone would like to nominate a tree. And also, if anyone would like to join us, we meet on Thursday evenings, third Thursday of the month, at the Senior Center. And again, if anybody's listening to this broadcast and would like to join our group, get in touch with me and we'll make it happen. Thanks so much for your support for the community forest.
Thank you. The next agenda item is communication. It's a funding request from day one. A reminder to the councilors, as with the funding requests at the previous meeting, to include this in the budget would require an amendment when we get to the budget resolve item. My next item is the first open session of the evening. If members of the public would like to address the council about any issue directly related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, the open session will be closed and we'll move on to unfinished business. The first item under unfinished business is Ordinance 090506, 2024, amending Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 12, General Business District by amending it to include manufacture-compounding and assembling of articles using main-derived forest products, agricultural products, or other natural resource inputs as a special exception used with the condition that the site must be located within the main forest bioproducts advanced manufacturing tech hub overlay district. A reminder to the council, we had a previous work session where we were briefed by Mr. Brencheck from Economic Development, and first reading of this item was passed on May 6. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
It's moved to adoption by Council Walker. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Whiting. Is there any public comment on this item? If so, the members of the public may approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, discussion by council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Weisner?
Yes.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Gary?
Yes.
Council Platts?
Yes.
Council Whiting?
Yes.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is a related matter. It's Ordinance 100506, 2024, creating the main bioproducts advanced manufacturing tech hub overlay district map. There was a public hearing, and this was passed on first reading by the council at the May 6 meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker for adoption. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Gary. Is there any public comment on this item? If members of the public would like to comment, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. I don't know if this is for Glenn or who the question is for, but my question is, why is the piece of general business that looks kind of like a sickle included in the map overlay? I ask that because it was, I voted in favor of this map overlay last meeting. However, I think a comment was brought up that people live there. And so my question is, why are we looking to have the overlay in a section of area where lots of lots, I think Eric said, were already developed and people live there?
So it's essentially surrounded by industrial now in that area. We can pull up the map if we need to. It would have created a really odd map to exclude that sliver along Hotel Road, I think it is, if it's the area that I'm thinking of. There's a mix of commercial uses there. It wasn't an important section, but it was a relatively small area in the larger, you know, industrial block and in general business block. There are mixed uses there. I think it probably would have gone industrial a long time ago if they weren't just trying to not make the mixed uses non-conforming. Because there are some homes, multifamilies, and businesses. I think there's a machine shop in that section. It's a real mix of uses along that stretch of road.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will it affect the taxes that the people, the homeowners pay in that if we agree tonight to change it?
No, it doesn't change the underlying zoning. So everything that's general business remains general business. Everything that's industrial remains industrial. I think the biggest difference is that there would be a little bit more flexibility in the general business portions to have a manufacturer that uses these types of technology products. They're already allowed in the industrial, they're already allowed in the area that surrounds that narrow strip of general business zone. And then the other piece, the other value to it, is it really puts us on the map. The state's making an effort to be on the map for these types of businesses. This really puts Auburn on the map within the state as the place to locate that type of business.
Council Milks?
And any companies that come in and choose to develop in that area, still going to have to go through the planning board process and all of that, correct?
Yeah, any business over 10,000 square feet of building area in the industrial zone, and that's the same now as it will be after this adoption. In the general business zone, any manufacturer that uses this type of process that doesn't qualify as a light manufacturer, because that's already allowed in the district, they would also have to go to planning board. And even a light manufacturer, if they're over 5,000 square feet of building area, they would have to go to planning board.
Mr. Manager.
Yeah, I would just add to Council Platts. It was a resident that was at the planning board meeting that brought up that same point. And Eric was able to spend some time with him afterwards and explain exactly what Council Milks had just said, that there's still that permitting process related to this. And so, and that person felt comfortable after that explanation.
I know that was a concern of mine going in, and I feel comfortable after doing a little more research on it, which is why I voted against it before, so.
And that was, that resident is in a residential zone that abuts the current industrial zone, so nothing really changes from that resident's perspective.
Anything further from the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by roll call. The clerk will call the roll.
Council Walker?
Yes.
Council Gary?
Yes.
Council Platts?
Yes.
Council Whiting?
Yes.
Council Cowan?
Yes.
Council Milks?
Yes.
Council Weisner?
Yes.
Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item on the agenda is Resolve 040506, 2024, adopting the appropriations resolved for fiscal year 2025. This item had a public hearing and passed first reading on May 6. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved by Council Walker for adoption and seconded by Council Milks. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this resolve? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Discussion by the council. Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My position has not changed. I will be voting against the budget. Even though we did work it, I think that we still could have done more. And I understand the fact that most of our increase is salary increases. And like I said before, when we were, when our attention was on other matters, we didn't notice other employees were kept adding to our role. I know that it's not fair to them to pink slip them at this point. I just know in future years, we're going to have to try to figure a way to downsize our top-heavy managerial part of our city workers and not the on-the-line trench workers.
Other questions or comments by the council? Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think a couple of points related to Council Gary's concern. We did take, we went back and took a look at numerous years, different points of time to see what has staffing looked like relating to relating to the budget. And we did identify, because there was a question regarding leadership team, added leadership staff. We've done, over the years, we've done probably two different points of time. One was in 2018 when we made an adjustment that was done regarding the planning office, economic development, and the code department and CDBG's office. And we merged staff together into one department. And then over the years, and sometimes this happens through change of leadership. Those were then became separate departments, and then we did the same thing more recently with public services when it comes to engineering, public works, transportation, and our facilities department. And we've merged those in under one. Each time we've done that, our total count for our leadership team has remained consistent each year. We have not changed that count. And so we did go through to take a look at that. We've had some increases when it comes to certain positions within the department. I'm sorry, within the city as in general. But those positions have been pretty minimal, and most have come through the, well, all have come through the council as far as position changes. as far as position changes. But our total staff count has not, has not changed, other than what you're seeing in this current budget year. And that's as a result of some of the added demands and needs. So, you know, just so the council knows, we're not seeing those increases. Some of our increases, though, are driven by a grant program that's funding those costs. The area that Counsel Gary has mentioned several times is regarding the CDBG office. We received a lead grant. That lead grant has positions that are tied to the implementation of that grant, and they're being funded by that department. And so, so those, those positions have not changed our overall staffing levels. I'm going to give you a breakdown here. Again, all three, so I went back and took a look at FY15, FY25. And in those years, we've had 12 departments. Departments haven't changed. Those are consistent. We still have 12 departments now. In FY15, we had 25 people in leadership positions. That included a director, a manager, or a deputy director. In FY25, we still have 25 individuals that are assigned to those leadership roles. They may be different roles because of some of our needs have shifted and changed. Over a 10-year period, we have gained 15 positions, and that's averaging one and a half per year. And these include recreation. Prior to FY15, we had pretty much eliminated the Recreation Department. And in 2011, there was just a position left in Rec. And that was through budgeting and the needs at that time. So we have added back in four and a half Rec specialist positions since that FY12 elimination. Within the Finance Office, which is a shared position with the Rec, has been the Switchboard. And that had been a request that had been brought before us often regarding better quality of customer service, to make sure we had somebody to answer the phone. And so, so we added a switchboard person back in. And so that was just a position out in FY11, and then that position brought back in recently. In the City Clerk's Office, we added a part-time marijuana business specialist. That position is reimbursed with fees that are collected. For the Fire Department, four firefighter positions were added. Those four firefighter positions were added as a result of a study that the council did in ad hoc council group to take a look at reducing overtime costs. Part of that reducing overtime costs were to add those four firefighter positions, which added one firefighter per battalion. So we now currently have 16 firefighters that are staffing the city. When, prior to that, we had 15. Within this budget, we have the second deputy chief was funded. This is, this was reinstated this year. So that position was actually funded in FY15. And so, that's the one leadership position in FY15 that was in that same count. And so that, that position that was reinstated this year was just a position from FY15. We added one HR specialist. We did this. However, we also eliminated administrative assistant positions throughout, throughout the departments. And we consolidated all HR services in under HR, rather than having an HR person within each department. And so, even though that's an added position, we had eliminated others as well. Planning, new this year is a new planner in FY25. That's what's being approved for tonight. We will allocate TIF funds to offset that planning position. Communications and Engagement, we added one position. And that one position we added was the individual that manages our social media. And so, that position was added about three years ago. Business and Community Development, we added the Public Health Coordinator. And we also, this is a position that was funded within the Police Department, that was working through grant funding. And when that grant funding ended, some of the priorities shifted, and that created the Public Health position. And, and then the additional General Assistance Position. This is a net gain of one from FY15. Prior to FY15, historically, there had been two positions in General Assistance. And so this was adding that position plus a new one. So you see the 10-year growth is 15 staff members. Again, many of those either offset by other funds or other driving needs within the community. But hopefully that gives you a better idea of what our positions have been, have changed or adjusted in the last 10 years.
Discussion by the council? Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Five having voted in the affirmative, and two in the negative, and five being the number required for passage, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to New Business. The first item is Order 7405202024, adopting the annual CDBG Home Consortium Action Plan. This item will have a public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Cowan for adoption, seconded by Counselor Walker. We will now open the public hearing. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Please approach the podium, provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the public hearing will be closed. Discussion by the council? Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Order 7505202024, adopting the revised CDBG CV budget. Is there a motion?
Motion to move.
Moved to adopt by Counsel Walker. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Platts. We'll now open the public hearing on this item. If members of the public would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, the public hearing will be closed. Discussion by the council? Counsel Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know most acronyms. I know what CDBG stands for, but what's that little dash CV?
Mr. Holmes?
That would be COVID. So these were very specific funds that came through during COVID. We were able to receive two different rounds of funding for a total of $472,917 over the years. And we are currently down to the last $35,000. And what we're doing is looking at the priorities that were set by the council, by the people who responded to all the surveys and all those things. And food was the biggest thing. So we're putting that money towards, well, over the next year, towards food programs that we'll be working through over the next couple of months to make sure we make something that works for the council.
So, and Mr. Holmes, remind me, this was the item, this is in response to the item during one of the budget workshops about food insecurity and programs such as Grab and Go, and this is diverting these unused funds to that program? Is that correct?
Correct. We went through a process to hopefully find somebody to queue some type of food program that will work either similarly or something in the future.
Further discussion by the council?
Just a thanks for making the effort that you're doing. I think it's a great reallocation of the dollars.
Thank you.
Counsel Walker?
The program has definitely helped us with the seniors too. Thank you.
Anything further from the council? Council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Order 76052024, authorizing the City Clerk to waive the $60 temporary food service fee for Phoenix No Limits Karate for a fundraising event to be held on June 8th, 2024. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Gary for adoption and seconded by Counselor Walker. Are there members of the public that would like to address the council on this item? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Seeing none, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council?
Mr. Mayor, just one comment, just about the application. I might be missing something here, but I don't see a spot in the application that has you prove if you're a nonprofit. And I'm not doubting their status as a nonprofit, and I'll vote in favor of this. It may just be something to look forward, look to on the application in the future. I don't, they click a box, but they're not providing like a nonprofit ID.
What page are you on for the application, Counsel Platts?
Page two.
It's 169 in the packet.
I don't see any issues with the application. This was just more a note, I know I've applied for these a lot in my personal life, and you often have to prove that you're a nonprofit, so just as a fact-finding position for the city, maybe something to look forward to in the application.
Yeah.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you. I am certain, since Emily's come on board, she's seen this form and said, you know, we probably need to make some adjustments to this. One, we'll be making it available online for folks to be able to complete. But we could make sure that we have something specific there where it's your, regardless of what your organization type is, you can then go ahead and add a copy of your 501(c)(3) status.
Further discussion by the council? Is the council ready for the question? Vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion's adopted. The next item is Order 77052024, authorizing the City Clerk to waive the $200 business license fee for Auburn Suburban Baseball and Softball. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Gary for adoption, seconded by Counselor Walker. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this item? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? The vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in the affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. The next item is Resolve 05052024, approving the Auburn Water District bond request in the amount of $626,939 to be used for the purchase of a Vector truck. As clarification for the council, the Auburn Water District's charter requires approval by the Auburn City Council before they can bond for any capital improvement items. This is a standard practice. This item has been approved by the Auburn Water District Board of Trustees. Superintendent Broadbent's here if there are any questions forthcoming. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Counsel Walker for adoption, seconded by Counselor Milks. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? If so, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, public comment will be closed. Discussion by the council? Counsel Platts?
Sorry, I have a lot of questions tonight. I guess just a question, as we're talking in our CIP meeting about a new Vector truck for Public Works. These are completely unrelated, and there would never be an opportunity for them to be shared. Is that correct?
So they're completely unrelated, and my recollection from discussion at a prior workshop was that the demand load that the Water District has and Public Works has doesn't allow for the sharing of one truck, but they have in the past and will continue in the future to be able to backfill if one of the trucks is down. Any further discussion by the council? Council ready for the question? All, excuse me, vote will be by show of hands. All in favor? Opposed? Seven having voted in affirmative and none in the negative, the motion is adopted. We'll move on to the second open session of the evening. Members of the public are invited to address the council on any items related to city business that's not on tonight's agenda. If there's members of the public that would like to address the council, please approach the podium and provide your name and address. Not seeing any, the open session will be closed. We'll move on to reports. For the mayor's report, several items. The Auburn Business Association Annual Meeting was held a week before last. I represented the city at the annual meeting. Bob Brainin was recognized as the Auburn Citizen of the Year. Very well deserved. If any of you know Bob, he's a great member of the community, a member to many people, helps out coaching, and is a very deserving recipient. There was a couple of business openings that I attended. We have Nancy's Boutique opened in the Auburn Mall. It's great to see them filling one of the vacancies at the mall. And I also attended the opening of the Life Forest Conservation Cemetery on Trap Road. Members of the prior council will remember that the council modified the cemetery ordinances to allow for conservation cemeteries, and they've now opened their business. This last weekend, I attended the Patriots Revolution Foundation Lewiston-Auburn Community Day. Mayor Shaleen from Lewiston and I welcomed the members of the community to attend that event. I want to thank the Communications and Community Engagement Team, the Police Department, the Fire Department, Public Works, for the great job they did putting on the Lobster Festival. Really great event and enjoyed by members of the community. I want to recognize Auburn native and 1974 Edward Little High School graduate Cynthia McFadden on her retirement after 30 years as a television journalist. Those that know Cynthia will remember that she's most recently been a legal and investigative correspondent for NBC News, but spent two decades prior to that at ABC News and was a co-anchor of Nightline. And we wish her well on her retirement. The last item to mention is the Water District Board of Trustees meeting will be held this Wednesday, the 22nd, at 4:00 p.m. at the district offices on Court Street. City Council reports will start with Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This sort of is, but it's not a counselor's report. I would like to thank the city manager for his description of the, of how many staff we have, and have him go back the years to say that our number count has pretty much not sort of changed. I agree with most of what he says, but I still feel that the position count has increased because throughout those years, not all positions were filled, and there have been some position freezes. And, and there may be, may have taken place some reorganization and restructuring of various departments. But a lot of their administration that I had said is, was in this mix. And with these new higher positions, a higher salary was given. And I understand the fact, not all the salaries show in our budget because some of them come out of TIF money, which is also people's money. But I do thank him kindly for his description.
Counsel Whiting?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to recognize Leaf Walker, my neighbor, who's valedictorian and other graduating seniors. And also to thank Sharon and Paul Rozinski, who cleared a boat, well, in city terms, it would be a mile. A lane. Well, i- in city terms, it would be a mile, a lame mile of trash from Johnson Road in North Auburn. They did a half a mile, but they did both sides. And, uh, uh, it was a dirty job and they filled a big trash bag.
Council Cowan.
Uh, I'd like to fill somewhat of my public health role, but also this is involved with, um, many of the public safety and many others in the city who, uh, so there was some very positive and, and encouraging news in, in the very daunting and sobering uh, realm of drug overdose and substance use dependence. In Maine, from, going from 2022 to 2023, we had a 16% decrease. For the first time since 2018, we saw a decrease in the number of deaths. That's the fifth largest decrease in the country. Uh, the US overall was 5%, and there were some states that saw an increase. This is, there's been a very multifaceted, multi-pronged approach in the state for many years, and includes our police officers, our fire departments, uh, others that are working closely with them in clinicians. So I just, a shout out to all of those who have been involved, um, on the front lines, uh, helping in this, uh, because that's, uh, it's a very encouraging statistic to see the, the, the impact we're having with such a daunting thing, so. Uh, and then, uh, just if anyone is interested in joining, uh, and, uh, listening in, we have a homelessness meeting, uh, this Thursday in the community room here, so.
At what time?
Sorry, at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Council Milks.
We have the sewer trustee meeting is, uh, sewer district trustee meeting is Fri- uh, Tuesday at 4:00.
Council Wyden.
None.
Council Walker?
Yes, I have some. Uh, I would like to thank the, uh, CD, CDBG Department for helping us. They put on a clothing giveaway Sunday. We had over 125 people show up. I think they walked away with over 3,000 pieces of clothing. I'd like to thank our senior citizens that were there that helped to, uh, bring everything out of the senior center, to bring it to the Auburn Library. And then our seniors were there to help fold and put everything together for giveaway. And we also had EL High School students that helped us, uh, which was a heck of a lot of help for, uh, older people that couldn't lug a lot of this stuff. And then at the end of the evening, we had senior citizens that showed up again to help pack everything up that was left. And we will do another one in the fall. It was a great turnout, and, uh, we were all pleased that we had as much help to do it all. Then also waste energy, we have, uh, uh, I think finalized our budget to bring to all of the other towns that are involved. That'll be done on June 6th. I believe it's like 4:30. So we'll be doing that at Fishbones to finalize the, uh, total budget. And last, Tuesday, May 28th, United New Auburn Association has a meeting again at Rolleys Diner. Auburn is sending a speaker. If you'd like to know who that speaker is, please show up on May 28th at 6:00 at Rolleys Diner. Then Thursday night, May 30th, the Neighborhood Watch Meeting, which is put on by the Auburn Police Department, 6:00 at the United New Auburn, uh, church, which is in New Auburn, I'm sorry, at the, uh, Sixth Street Congregational Church, 6:00. And we will, you know, we'll talk about things that go on in Auburn as well as New Auburn. And everyone is welcome to that meeting. Plenty of room for you, so please come with us at the new, the, uh, Neighborhood Watch Meeting. Thank you.
Council Pla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple of bullets here. Uh, first, I just wanted to congratulate Anaya for your first meeting with the council here. Um, I'm not sure if it's appropriate to give Anaya her own report, bullet point, or just make sure we include her as we go around.
We, we, yeah, we had an orientation earlier today. We, we won't put her on the spot tonight. We, we'll give her an opportunity to report going forward.
Well, I just wanted to say that, and also if you have questions, don't be afraid to ask any of the counselors. I think we're eager to watch you learn from what we're doing up here, and you'll be a part of it. So, um, that's number one. Number two, I wanted to just inform the council about two things that happened at the school committee meeting last week. We met, uh, on the 15th. And there were just two financial-related things that passed that I think the council should know about. Uh, the first was the school department's, um, decision to vacate a lease, uh, in Lewiston at 1830 Lisbon Street. And if you followed the meeting, you might have heard this, but just to give some additional context to what that was all about, um, that was the space the Share Center was previously housed at. The Share Center used to be a program of the Auburn School Department, uh, and recently broke away to form independently as a nonprofit. Um, our responsibility to them previously was to guarantee their lease at that space. Um, now that that organization is no longer a part of the school department, the school department voted to, uh, vacate the lease and essentially the guarantee of that. So there's, there's no financial impact, but we removed our guarantee of the lease of the Share Center as they go off under their own. And the second thing was at the meeting, um, we authorized, uh, the school department to file seven, I believe it was seven, uh, $5,000 applications through Harriman, uh, Harriman, um, Architecture and Engineering to apply for, uh, DOE construction applications. So these would be state funds that I believe would assist in some, uh, rehab of physical buildings and physical assets. Um, it's a, I think a five or a seven-year cycle. I, I could ask Mr. Conrad to confirm that. Uh, but just to let everyone know, we're, we're chasing some state funds.
Um, just for clarification, is, is that being done in concert with the facility study that's underway?
I, I, I should find clarification on that. I don't know if the two are directly linked. I, I'm not sure if that was a recommendation of Harriman's facilities, uh, report. I can check on that. Or if the timing is just right that we're engaging with Harriman for two independent projects at the same time. I can find that out.
I think my recollection, um, from one of the budget work sessions is Councilor Mix, uh, Milks raised some issues about the ongoing facility study. And, uh, my recollection is one of the items, um, that they're considering in that is the age and the need for capital improvements at those facilities as they make a decision what the forward-looking plan might be. So it might be timing, but I think it would be important that, um, if funds are being expended to make decisions about capital improvements at some of these buildings, that that be done in concert with their facility study that's ongoing.
And I could ask for some clarification at that, either at the next meeting or the next finance subcommittee meeting. Um, that's a great question. I do know it was kind of, at least it was explained to me by Mr. Conrad that, um, not applying for these would be missing out on a potential opportunity to subsidize, you know, things that, so. But I can follow up on it. Um, and my last bullet is just, uh, that the Conservation Working Group is meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the Auburn Senior Center.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council. I'd like to also echo, uh, welcoming Ms. Eggy as part of our council representative. Um, I think that having a student voice in this process is going to be essential. Uh, there's a second empty seat that you see. We will be, uh, looking to recruit a current sophomore that will be coming into their junior year. And so, um, that way there, they actually stay on the council on a two-year term, uh, as their junior and then moving into their senior year. So, so we're really excited that we have, uh, this opportunity. Uh, we will add a bullet moving forward for our student representative, uh, comments. One thing that I, uh, shared was that just making sure that liaison from the school back to the city on items, initiatives that are taking place, um, is going to be really important for, for the public and also for, for the council. And then just weighing in on items that we're having discussions about is going to be really, really vital. This is initiative that had been in our charter for, probably since the charter was, was written, um, 2005. Thank you, historian, Mr. Cleveland. Yes. Um, however, there was never any ordinance in place on the process of actually, uh, selecting a student representative. So we worked on that 2018, 19. COVID came and it got shelved. And so the fact that we are here executing the, the fine work of 2005, um, puts us, uh, right on track on schedule, I think, so. Uh, but we are, we are thrilled to have this and, uh, and have you joining us, and we look forward to, um, you know, how many students would say, yeah, I can't wait to spend my summer coming to council meetings twice a month? And so the fact that we have a committed student willing to do that, we're really excited about it. Um, this is also, uh, uh, National Public Works Week, um, which started yesterday. So I really do appreciate our team with Auburn Public Works, um, the PW Professionals. You know, they work hard to enhance the quality of life here in the city of Auburn, um, keeping our roads safe, our city safe. Uh, beautiful, clean and strong is, is a, is a part of their mission, so, uh, so we will be sure to recognize our team this week. Um, also on, uh, June 2nd, uh, Sunday, June 2nd at 10:00 AM, uh, we will be unveiling and dedicating the ball fields, um, unveiling the monument and then the ball fields at Pettingill Park in memory of Joseph Walker and Tricia Allison, both who, uh, their lives were tragically taken, uh, on October 25th, uh, 2023. So we really encourage the public to join us. Council, you've received your invitations for that. Uh, hopefully you'll be able to come out and join us for that special dedication. Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Uh, the next item will be the finance report for February 24th from Ms. Earl.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Uh, just to highlight that, uh, for tracking purposes, we should be around 58.3%. Um, there is nothing of note or concern, uh, with regards to that percentage, but some highlights of that is that we have, uh, collected 62.88% of the budgeted general fund revenue. Um, that is 3.09% higher in tax revenues. Um, that is consistent with an increase in budget and costs. Um, so there's nothing concerning there, and, and it's, I would like to say it's a positive, but it really is just that we're collecting as we should. Um, permitting revenues is a positive on this one. Uh, they've increased by $66,713 year-to-date, which is 30.92% higher than in FY '23 year-to-date. Uh, so that is, uh, a positive for that department as well as for our budgeting. Our expenditures, uh, through February 2024 are at 56.21% of the budget, uh, which is lower than that tracking purpose of 58.3, um, but it's not of concern. We do have a lot of pending projects that we just haven't received the invoices yet as of the February report. And of course, we have them now, and you'll see those in those reports as we, um, continue to get updated on those. Um, of note, uh, there was a decrease in utilities year-to-date of $109,108. Uh, that was due to the energy efficient changes from the Facilities and Energy Department, and specifically a net energy billing credit agreement that we went into with, um, that made hydropower. So that's something that I think should be noted. Uh, that's a fairly large decrease in our utilities, and, and we talked about that during our budgeting process as well, but I thought it was important to highlight that. Um, if you'd like me to go through the others for, uh, Norway Savings Bank area and Ingersoll, I can. Um, but all of the noted changes are listed in that report. Um, so if you'll just let me know, I can go over them, or if you've read them and you're satisfied, that's perfectly fine as well.
Other questions from the council about the finance report? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There'll be no executive session tonight, and, um, for clarification for the public, um, once the council adjourns, we'll be entering back into work session to complete the review of the CIP, uh, bond request. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Council Pla, seconded by Councilor Milks. All in favor? Opposed? We'll be adjourned. The council now enter back into, um, work session to complete the review of the CIP.
Thank our, our student representatives' parents came tonight, and I think that we'll go ahead and thank you very much. And we won't have to stay for the, the last part of our workshop, but thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we do have Dan Goyette, our city engineer, um, here with us. I want to make sure Dan can walk through, uh, some of these, uh, engineering projects. Also, I asked Dan to take a, um, a more thorough look into, uh, Merrill Road, and so we'll be able to answer those questions. Council Cowan and a few others had asked questions regarding Merrill Road, uh, whether to phase it, move forward one project, what would that look like? Um, we will have available for you, um, the, um, adjustment and the interest on that. Um, our, our bond agent wasn't available today to get us those numbers, but, uh, but we'll have that. And, uh, he's really quick once, once he's in office, so we'll make sure we have that. We'll provide it to you. Uh, that was a, a specific question that Council Cowan had asked, if the 3 million was added into the bond. And then Council Cowan, one of the other questions you had asked was related to, um, you know, what's the potential interest impacts if we weren't to do, if we weren't moving forward with it this year? Um, you know, the, the hope would be that our interest rates would be dropping. I think everybody's waiting, right? And so, um, so that's about the best answer I can give you. Everybody's waiting and we're hoping. Um, but we do, uh, we do very well in the market when we, we sell our bonds. Um, and, uh, Kelsey has some of those numbers, just to talk about what you're currently looking at, what that impact would be, and then we would need to add the 3 million, so. Um, Dan, you want to walk through the projects real quick that we have? Yep?
So Whitman Spring Repair, I would.
Is the green light on? There you go. That way you won't have to push the button.
Okay, so first off, in the list is the Whitman Spring Repair. That was actually a Public Works project that we overtook over in engineering because it just made more sense. Public Works is, is going to do a lot of the, the drainage work for the project to help keep costs down. That is essentially going to be a grind, so, uh, not a milling, but a reclaiming of the road and just a paving surface. We understand it's basically a glorified parking lot, but there are residences and the road is used by the Water District. So it won't be a, a big expense, but is in dire need of repair. Um, reconstruction projects listed, uh, do you have the list of the streets? Do you want me to go street by street or? Reconstruction projects are full-depth reconstruction, meaning we take out the gravel, usually install drainage, curbing sidewalks where appropriate, bulk, uh, complete streets policy of the city. Uh, reclamation projects, those are, are more rural roads where we'll go in and reclaim the road. Sometimes we add gravel, sometimes we add fabric, open drainage, ditches, and pave the streets. Uh, pavement resurfacing is exactly what it sounds like, where we're just going in and, uh, overlaying streets that were rehabbed in the past, usually in the past 10 years, and they're in need of a new wearing surface to prolong the life of the road. Um, MDOT match, we take advantage of the Maine Municipal Partnership Initiative Program from Maine DOT, which is a 50/50 split up to 725,000 from municipality and from the state. And then along with that, we, um, go after and receive funds, although this is the last year for, through the Inter-Craveling Transportation Resource Council, which is the, uh, Division of AVCO, where we receive our 80/20, 80/10/10 split, so 80 federal, 10% state, 10% city for projects. Um, the projects are things like, uh, the section of Hotel Road from East Hard Scrabble to, um, Lewiston Junction. That is an 80/10/10 split section. The city is actually using, uh, the MPI program to add on to that, which is the sections of Hotel Road that you saw that were shimmed this, uh, today, actually. Uh, major drainage, that's how we pay for our MS4 program. It's also how we do repairs to stormwater structures and stormwater piping where it collapses. Um, pavement condition assessment, this is important to us this year. It's, the last assessment was done 13 years ago. Um, we would be hiring a firm to come in with a radar truck and actually drive each road. It's all scanned and it's a much better system than what we used to do 13 years ago, where you'd pay someone to go out and look at the road, count the cracks. Now there's actually a truck that just drives and scans the road as it drives, roughness, uh, curvature, uh, all the things you want to know. And gives us a grading of the road, so we can go back and look at how our long, uh, long-range capital improvement program aligns with those needs and which roads are in worse shape, which roads are in better shape, those sorts of things. And along with that, we'd be hiring an engineer firm to do an assessment of our city-owned retaining walls. Unfortunately, there are a lot of city-owned retaining walls within the city. Um, some that you probably think are city and aren't city, and some that are a city that, uh, we wish weren't. Some that you probably think are city and aren't city and some that are city that we wish weren't, quite frankly. So basically coming up with the same type of list so that we can better understand where our retaining walls are failing, which ones need to be repaired more quickly. And then the other big item I know Phil wanted me to touch on was Merrill Road. Anyone who's driven Merrill Road understands the condition that it's in. The road also has a very dangerous curve and hill as you come from, let's say, Hotel Road side. It goes up and banks left. There's been a number of fatalities over the years on that corner. The reconstruction of that road will include blasting and removal of ledge and the realignment of that road and that corner specifically. There's also a stream crossing that needs to be permitted and there's an in-water work window where you're not allowed to work in that stream certain times a year. So there's some coordination with that. We do not have that permit in hand yet. We were waiting to find out when and if we do get funding because the permit's only good for so long. Other than that, that's what complicates Merrill Road in terms of trying to do it in two sections is it's, you can't realign this section of road and the other road's over here. You have to do it all at once. And unfortunately, it's kind of in the middle, so there's no good spot to bifurcate the project and make it two projects without incurring a lot of cost because then you're paying two mobilizations, two bonds, two everything rather than doing it all at once.
And probably the other added project that was dropped off on this, and I think part of it might have been we were evaluating Lake Grove Park and just the use of the new park there. And we had in the CIP plan, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand. And that was for the parking lot, creating additional parking on the now-dead-end street.
Correct.
So that we could have some parking outside of the gated area. That is a park that is getting a great deal of use. We have been monitoring it on some weekends and even in the evenings and we're exceeding and we're creating some challenges in there for parking. And then also the basketball court would be paved over. So the hundred and twenty-five thousand that you were able to shave, within recommend reductions, we would actually ask that that be brought back in for that project. The remaining twenty-five thousand, we would use out of some remaining. The council had allocated a certain amount of ARPA funds for the Lake Grove Initiative. There's twenty-five thousand in there that we could apply to finish that project. So the amount being requested, we remain the same, but we would just bring that project up because it has become more of a priority as we've been monitoring. Dan brought it to my attention this morning and that it did get dropped off, but it's one where we're seeing some considerable use there in need. And we've argued, I'm sorry, Dan.
I'll just mention that the basketball court isn't just getting paved or it's actually being reconstructed. It would be raised up out of the water table and so that it lasts a lot longer.
And we have worked with the water district regarding
Yes.
the land that's actually theirs and to be able to sign over.
Yeah, they thought the state had actually taken it with our last project, so.
Questions by the council? Council Walker?
Sidewalks, do you have a list exactly what you plan on doing?
In terms of sidewalks, no. So other than the streets listed and for each project, those will be reconstructed or a sidewalk added. The hundred thousand, I believe it's, is it still a hundred thousand? I should have brought glasses. Yeah, a hundred thousand dollars. That's for project-specific, like there's a crosswalk that doesn't meet ADA. We're going through with the resurfacing project and we need to upgrade that. Or there's a sidewalk that's in disrepair that needs to be repaired. There's nothing specific with that other than where the needs arise. Like this is how we paid for the Gamma Jav crosswalk, where the lights still are not up, but that's what this money was used for.
Well, in New Auburn, I've brought up the last couple of years, a couple of real bad sidewalks. I was hoping you were going to release have, I think it's fourth, fifth or sixth. I don't remember now, but.
Yeah, I actually looked at that today. Sixth is due up for reconstruction in 2028 on the list as it currently stands. So those sidewalks would all be redone at that time. It's hard for us to go ahead and, first of all, a hundred thousand isn't going to do it, but to go ahead and do that ahead of the road project, it can be done, but it kind of complicates it. If the drainage isn't right, then we have to tear up the sidewalk to install new underdrain and drainage at the same time. So we try to shy away from that.
Well, I don't like the idea of shying away from it because this project has been on the hit list now for eight years. Eight years I've listened to the guy that owns the property from it.
I know.
And I bring it up and bring it up and bring it up and yeah, we'll look at it. Yeah, we can probably do this and yeah, we can probably do that. And then just so you know, and I know you know it, there hasn't been one damn thing done, nothing. Not even to pick up the lousy stone that sticks out of the ground that's been nothing but a headache to the guy that lives there. So putting it off to 2028 doesn't make him happy, doesn't make me happy.
Mr. Holland is actually, and I are actually meeting with that gentleman next week. Scott is going to be doing some concrete, that's a concrete sidewalk. That's why it's such an issue. He's got, Public Works is planning on doing some work out there this summer, but it isn't going to address the, you're probably aware of the retaining wall issue that he has. That project is not going to address that. That's all I can, it, a hundred thousand dollars isn't going to repair the sidewalk on there. But Public Works is planning to address that unevenness of the existing sidewalk.
And I agree a hundred percent, a hundred thousand will not address it. I think you should have come here with a budget that addresses some of the problems that we've had in this city for years. A hundred thousand has never addressed the problems with our sidewalks, but you keep putting a hundred thousand or somebody cuts it, so it's down to a hundred thousand. Just like doing roads, you have a number in here that doesn't even come close of doing the roads that need to be done. A hundred and eighty thousand or one million eight hundred doesn't, doesn't cut it. It just doesn't cut it. So, and we have many times wanted to do more in your budget and you still end up with one million eight hundred thousand. To me, it's just absolutely ridiculous. Show us the real numbers that you need. Let us decide to cut it. Let us decide if that's the road that should be done. I don't care how you rank them, you're ranking. Main Street in Auburn should have been done three years ago.
The state's repaving that next summer.
Is it going to be done this year?
The next, the state is repaving that next summer.
The state's going to, well, why don't you somehow put it in so we know that the state's going to do it? It's been an argument for three years to do Main Street. It would be nice if we knew ahead so we wouldn't be picking on you that it hasn't been done.
If I might, so I do think it would be helpful. I get feedback quite a lot from people that don't really understand the difference between the state roads and the local roads and it's two different lists. It would be helpful to the extent that the state tells us when they're going to be doing these, if we could get a schedule out there so that when we're talking with constituents or people could look online to understand when some of these things.
So if you look at our construction page on our website, we do list all the state projects and we do keep them updated. Things that complicate that are things like earmarks now, projects we thought were happening this year are not happening this year. It's out of our control type thing, but. And in terms of, if you went to a twenty-five, I can quickly talk to Mr. Council Walker's point. If you went to a twenty-five-year program where every road in the city was addressed or maintained within twenty-five years, you can triple all of these amounts every year. That's what it would cost.
So we are putting funding in for assessment and so part of that pavement assessment, we true try to make sure we're tying in. Obviously, it makes sense when we do new road changes to tie in the sidewalks. We have several that are under work plan now for some that were washed away. We have the one on Mind Avenue that was washed away. So we have projects that are underway and some of this, especially some of these smaller projects, there aren't a lot of contractors that we can tap into for some of these small projects. They will tap into the large projects where it's a full road reconstruction and we're getting bids for those. But even for those, we have to, we have to be able to manage how many, how many projects we're moving forward with. And Dan does a great job bartering with the state because that's really what's involved here. It's, hey, we know this project's coming. We need to tie this one in. This one probably should move to higher on your list. Here's the reasons why. And so there's a lot of that that happens and sometimes we don't get the information until they have finally made their final approval. But I really, you know, Dan and I have talked about this. We're looking forward to the assessment. I think that's going to give you, we've been working off a very old assessment for road reconstruction. This new assessment, we're hopeful will provide us a better picture of what our current state of roads are. You know, Dan has provided and we can, we can make it available for the council. He's provided, we've taken, I think, road reconstructions by ward and we've, we've provided just how much investments we've done per ward so that you could take a look at those. And so we can, we can update some of that. We can make that available for you. I know for some of you, your constituents, it's a, it's a big deal, right? You know, what's taking place in my ward and why isn't this a priority? Part of the challenge though is that some wards have a lot more state roads that are incorporated and so that has a much different impact. But at least locally funded roads, Dan can provide that. We do break it up by wards. You can see, I think we did one that showed what the ten-year investment was within, within a couple of wards that specifically had made that request. So we can do that. We can make that available. And then, you know, part of it is also just, you know, how much, how much can we do in one year? It's not that we don't have the capacity to outsource. It's just some, we wouldn't be able to outsource a lot of it because we wouldn't be able to get within their list. But if this is something that you are saying, hey, look, this is a priority for us. After we take that assessment, we get the report back, if you want to have a workshop where we say, this is really what we want to do moving forward, prior to budget, prior to us getting involved in where we're at currently within the budget process, but be able to say, this is going to be a priority for us in this upcoming budget. What's that going to cost us? Dan can work through all of that and be able to really give you a good review. So we're hopeful for this assessment that that's going to give us the information we're looking for. But then for you to be able to say, this is going to be our priority. And you might be sitting here saying, we're going, you know, if the council decides tonight to move forward with the Merrill Road project, that's three million dollars added to reconstruction. And if you're saying that's the dollar figure we want to move forward, know that that's, you know, you're not going to see that impact this year. You're going to see it next year of around two million. Well, what's being proposed tonight without Merrill Road is going to be about two million dollars more added to our interest that, that we'll need to make sure we're budgeting for next year. And so, and then obviously with that additional three thousand, you're looking at, at an increase there. So I think that this is all good discussion. I think we can make that available, but I really would like to be able to build off from that assessment and then be able to give you a good, accurate accounting of where we're at for roads. And this is one of the biggest challenges that Auburn has as a city too. If you take a look at, we have more lane, lane miles for our community than anyone else in the surrounding area. So you'd have to, you'd have to patch together several communities to even begin to mirror what we have for road requirements here in Auburn. And so that's a, that's a big demand for us.
Council Milks?
Yeah, I would like to see, I mean, I think the fatalities in itself was sort of the final thing for me. I'd like to see Merrill Road put into the CIP and then I think we can take it out if we decide not to do it. But I don't, I think, I think it's, it's way, way, way past being done and it's, there's commercial buildings down there. There's a lot of commercial.
So I will say.
Can we do it?
We can do it. It wouldn't, the construction wouldn't occur until next year. But the, the road, just so the residents, if anyone's listening, the road will still be posted, no truck traffic beyond that commercial stretch as it approaches Hotel Road. We can do that because it is not a state aid road. Any road that receives federal or state funds, we cannot post no trucks. So things like Park Avenue, Mount Auburn Avenue, Turner Street, those are the roads we cannot post that way.
They still drive down.
That's, that's not, that's, I put up the signs.
I appreciate that too.
Council Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you put it on your, well, two different things on your radar? When you do sidewalk construction or before that, can you evaluate the curb cut that leads into the crosswalk? That little bumpy thing that lets people.
Detectable warning strips, yeah.
Because some of those are worn or they look kind of rusty and it really detracts from the sidewalk.
They're, they're all rusty because it's cast iron, so.
And some of them are chipped or something. It looks like there's parts of it, certain places.
There used to be a plastic.
Cover?
There used to be something else that the state wanted us to use and they've since noticed that they all fail, so we've gone back to cast iron, so.
And then the other thing is in New Auburn, at that crosslight going from Barker either towards Auburn Housing's other little apartment house, yeah, Vincent Block. There's this thing in the middle of the sidewalk that somebody tripped over now twice. That it's, it's a barrier between either going straight across or going across to going up Main Street.
It's in the sidewalk?
Yeah.
So perhaps, Council Gary, somebody from engineering will contact you and you can point out exactly what, where the concern is.
I mean, it'd be just something easy. Put a planter on it so that people will know not to keep on walking. And also your plow guys will be, well, the city plow guys will know it's there when it's snow. Yes, thank you. I'll do that.
Council Wyeth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with Council Milks. I'm in favor of Merrill Road with my experience with working for the state of doing the construction and one, one is the best way to do it. My other thing is I understand Mr. Manager's point of if we were to add more money to funding our roads and there gets to be a point of we're just have too much money and you're not accomplishing that. And I know we're looking at the evaluation of how much, what roads we can do in the priority. I, I would like to see just the money being there and available. So if we decide we can do with more money, that we have it available. Is there, if we were to say add two hundred and fifty to half a million dollars on top to any one of these categories or spread, will that be somewhat of a meaningful impact to, for you to assist in doing resurfaces or? In my lingo, sorry, I know someone, a mill and fill or some other.
Realistically, reconstruction and reclamation, no, but in the surfacing budget, yes, that would make a difference. Just reconstruction, you're talking four and a half million dollars a mile, so two hundred and fifty thousand doesn't get me, doesn't get me far enough to do a project. But in terms of resurfacing, yes, because I can repave small sections of streets and source of those sorts of things.
Council Milks?
Request of one of my constituents, there's a Maple Point or Maple PT.
Yeah.
It's a dirt road between Manley and Hotel.
Yeah.
Requesting, is there any chance that ever gets paved?
Probably not because it doesn't meet city construction standards and we typically don't go back and rebuild a road like that to city standards to make it paved.
Council Cowan?
Yeah, I just voiced my support for funding to do Merrill Road. The sense I got from previous conversations that we've had is that this is not a project that you can delay five or 10 years and I don't think that we'd really be saving much unless we could do something like that. And knowing that we have, it needs to be done. It just, I don't know that we're gaining a lot if we, if we wait one more year. If that also means that we might, might potentially have a backlog on other projects just because of capacity that you, you would have. So I would be in favor of adding that to the CIP.
Council Platt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of thoughts. I appreciate everyone's comment about Merrill Road and getting it in there. I'm, I'm a little hesitant to. in there, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to feel fully supportive of it, I, in that we're, we're coming off this budget discussion, and that we are looking at line items and nickel and diming to make sure we can save as much money. I just, I wanna make sure everyone's aware of the financial impact of, of three-plus million dollars in bond. I mean, we're talking about, we're, we're discussing cutting ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars from a budget, well, we've just added that back, and that's fine, I understand roads need to be paved. Uh, but, it's just a, a thought I'm having, I think, I, I react a little more emotionally to the fatalities on that road than people, you know, bumping around. I, I wonder what could be done, signage, flashing lights, you know, on that hill, where I believe a couple people have deceased, um, you know, short of reconstructing the road, um, to Counsel Cowan's point, I, I agree, I don't think kicking the can down the road saves us a ton of money, but it's also a cash flow issue. It's, it's, it, it might not save us money, but we're not looking to raise taxes on our constituents' five percent against next, next year. So, we need to be thinking about this stuff as we're throwing around these huge numbers. Um, so, just a thought, Mayor, I don't know that I'm necessarily one way or the other, but that's just kinda what I'm thinking and feeling right now. Just two other quick comments, um, going through the reconstruction list and the reclamation list, I drove a bunch of those roads, and I, you know, I know priority says very high, it just doesn't feel like all those roads are the same, you know. Sorry, Tim, I'm looking at Davis Granite, like, I know that those probably are listed as, as very high, but when you drive them at fifteen miles an hour, it's different than when you're driving on Powell Road, or, what I didn't even see on here was Harmon Corner Road, there's two-foot holes in Harmon Corner Road, you know, on the way out to Fox Ridge. I also, you know, I got my road, Perkins...
That's, that's being done this year, isn't it?
Oh, great, fantastic. I live on Perkins Ridge, and I see Perkins Ridge on here, um, I shouldn't say this, 'cause this is my road. Uh, but, I mean, Perkins Ridge, there's, if that section from Garfield Road to the Gun Club is a half a mile, uh, there can't be more than two hundred linear feet of issues. So, I, I, and I'm not saying I'm questioning anyone's assessment, I think I could learn a lot by seeing how these assessments are conducted. Um, again, I drove these roads, and I'm not even necessarily saying decrease the budget for reclamation or reconstruction, I just wonder, are there areas that aren't Perkins Ridge, where I live, that I drive on every day, and I'm not gonna pop a tire? So, my only thoughts.
Um, a few, a few comments about, um, Merrill Road. So, um, I, I had a couple people who live on Merrill Road, um, talk to me about, um, if it's done, the manner in which it's done. And so, I understand that, um, the path that's no trucks now be, remain posted as no trucks, but, um, as we all know, even though I, 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 kudos to Public Works, they, um, did a really good job putting some new signage out there to help with this, is the road base different? Um, the part, the commercial truck traffic will be allowed on, um, when you re, rebuild Merrill Road, is the whole road going to be the same, or is, so the piece between the snow trucks isn't being built to a standard that would support heavy truck traffic?
No.
So, um, uh, that's a concern. Um, it, it's not an engineering concern, it's an enforcement concern, because we're going to potentially invest a lot of money in that road, and we need to really think about what we're going to do about, um, the, the, the truck traffic. Basically, what I see is, if their GPS says turn on this road, they go right through the signs and they keep going. So, we're gonna have to think about that, because we don't wanna sink a lot of money in Merrill Road, and then turn around and have the thing start being chewed up by heavy truck traffic. Um, I got a couple questions about timing. So, I understand the point about doing it all in one project. If this were approved, what's the timing of this look like? This would start next year, the year after?
Next year. It'd be, yeah, it would be bid this winter, for construction starting next spring.
Okay.
So, spring of twenty-five.
Yeah, it'd be done over the spring and early summer of...
Well, it would take longer than that, but yes.
All, all through the summer?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And then, I guess, um, one of the things I would point out, um, this significant fiscal impacts about this, I think we all realize, adding three million to this CIP budget is problematic, but part of the reason that we're here is that, um, CIP is always a very difficult thing for the council. In, sometimes in the past, um, CIP has been the place where cuts were made in order to have a more palatable budget. And Merrill Road is a prime example of what you get when you do that, right? You get to a point where engineering has no other option but to tear the whole thing down and start over again. Um, so, um, we're in a very difficult position, it's a large project, um, the road's not gonna get any better, and, um, the, the thing that I'm concerned about with funding this is that there is not a lot of time before the public safety bond hits this CIP budget. And it's going to, as difficult as it might be to look at this today, it's going to be far more difficult to have a conversation about spending three or a couple of years from now, maybe three and a half million dollars, to fix Merrill Road at the same time that we're seeing the impacts of the bond issue for the public safety building. So, um, it, it's difficult, but I think, um, the reality is, if we don't get this done now, and schedule this before the public safety building, it, it, the fiscal impact is likely to push this out a lot further, and the dangerous situation's gonna be even worse. Um, so, that's my thoughts on Merrill Road. A, any other questions?
It's a quick addition, if we do, as a council, decide to go in that direction, I would maybe urge us to take a look at those other reconstruction and reclamation budgets to maybe, re, you know, pull out Perkins Ridge, save two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that can go towards Merrill Road. I just, I'm getting nervous that we're gonna find ourselves a year from now with debt service that nullifies all the cost savings we've done this year, and that we're gonna have to do next year. Approving these things is really easy, 'cause guess what, it doesn't cost us anything for twelve months. Well, it's a lot harder in twelve months when we have to look at the repercussions of what we've done, so, I, I'm not saying any of these things aren't deserving of our money, but it's just a lot easier to raise your hand and say yay, right now, when we're not paying for it. So, I just urge everyone to have caution.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was having a similar thought, Counsel Pla, that it, your thoughts, Dan, in terms of, if, um, the council thought it would be too much to pay, put in an additional three million, what would you prioritize within the reconstruction or reclamation budgets in terms of, how would Merrill Road fa, fall into that? It just might be useful for us to know, um, as we move forward. Um, the, a, a second comment, I, I may be incorrect in my, my thinking of this, is but a reminder that this year we had an unprecedented, at least that's my understanding, an unprecedented level of salary increase than what we normally do. And so, I think, you know, I think we need to weigh that in as much as we do in increase in our debt service, because we, based on the information provided to us, we shouldn't expect a two-point-eight million dollar increase in salary increase next budget. That's what killed us this time. Um, and, you know, so I think, that's just something for us to, to think as we move forward with this consideration, is, is all the entire budget and what we think may or may not be increasing compared to what it did this year, so.
I just wanted to weigh in, uh, on the dollar amount portion of this. So, with our fourteen million, six hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar proposed CIP, we're looking at a debt service total payment in our first year of one million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars. Rough math, and again, Phil said that, uh, we were waiting for our bond counsel for an exact number, but based on that average, if we were to add in three million dollars, we'd be adding in, uh, almost three hundred and eighty thousand dollars to that debt payment. Now, we are retiring some debt, um, but this doesn't take into account, uh, any additional debt payments we'd be making on the public safety facility, so it's just for informational purposes.
So, what, so what's...
Ten-year bond?
Ten years.
What does that mean?
They're ten-year bonds, generally.
And, so, what's the comparison between the one-point-nine million, um, first year debt service for this bond compared to what's, what will be retired that year?
So, it'll give or take, uh...
Round numbers.
Yeah, it'll be around a wash, without adding that three million in. If we added that in, uh, we would have an increased debt service payment.
So, so if I'm understanding that correctly, understanding we have to wait for the actual interest rate from the bond counsel, in effect, it's a, it, there's no net increase, um, unless we add Merrill Road in, and if we did, the debt service would go up approximately three hundred and eighty, three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for a year debt service.
That's correct, and again, not taking into account the public safety facility that we...
Right, not taking into account public safety. Um, okay, and Counsel Milks, did you have anything further? Um, other, other questions by the council, by engineering? So, so, in summary, I think, just to get a sense of where the council's at, uh, so the manager will have some direction going forward here. In my notes, what we talked about doing was decreasing record, um, restoration by fifty thousand, um, eliminating the Court Street for a hundred and fifty thousand, increasing traffic calming and pedestrian safety by seventy-five thousand, bringing that up to one-seventy-five, and potentially adding a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for Lake Grove, prior to the discussion of Merrill Road. Did I get that correct? Okay. And then, um, so I guess, that's the first question, before Merrill Road, what's the sense of council on those changes? Do, do people find those to be acceptable? Okay, and then, what, what's the sense of the council about the Merrill Road, um, project? I've heard several already have, uh, said they were in favor of that, um, should, like, you're gonna have to act on it anyways, but should the manager include this in, in the, um, in the package, include the Merrill Road project? What, what's the sense of the council on that?
I, I, again, I'd be curious, and if the answer's no, I'd like to know that, too, but I'm just, Tim's point, to my point, is there anything that can be taken out of the reclamation or reconstruction budget to, or is that just a bad starting point?
So, so, sure, right? So, so he, he...
Unfortunately, I don't have the breakdown of those specific each road, how much each one costs, I have it downstairs, but I don't have it here. I can kinda give you a snapshot of what removing one street from each, or what seems to make sense. I mean, Blanchard and Hershey Hill, I would not remove from, or recommend removing from reconstruct, uh, reclamation, if you've seen those roads. Um, Perkins Ridge is the best of all three of those, not that it's great, but it's the best of all three of those. Yeah. Um, I would look at the re, I'd have to look at the reconstruction again, and go look at where each of those are at, but...
So, so, the reality of this is, engineering will respond to whatever you say a number is.
Right.
If, if you said tonight, like some councils have said in the past, not doing any road work, take it all out, they'd take it out. I think what we need to think about here in making these decisions is, it's kicking the can down the road.
Yeah, they don't go...
We all know, excuse me, we all know, and Dan's pointed out, the schedule that we are currently on for road maintenance is going to be beyond a recommended schedule. It's not gonna happen within twenty-five years, and it's probably not gonna happen within forty years.
Yeah, it's about a fifty-year plan.
Right, so, so, the, so fundamentally, I, I would look at it this way. I wouldn't worry about what the actual roads are, I think the council needs to be thinking about on a forward-going basis, what do we want to have for a plan to, to take care of the roads? And I think that, um, those counselors have been here a long time, who have a lot of history about this, but I think that, in general, um, that there's been numerous points in the past where this has been decreased, and it's just kicked the can down the road. So, part of this isn't just deciding what particular projects this year, it's thinking, going forward, what does this look like? And I think, um, perhaps if, um, finance could provide us with a, I think Counsel Pla's raised this issue, uh, in an earlier meeting, what's the debt service retirement going to look like per year over the next ten years? Because that should be a baseline, in, in, in my opinion, that we at least do that much. Because, I'm sure all of you get the same number of calls I do, there's a lot of people that are seriously concerned about the roads. So, that should be a baseline, and then we can think about going forward, what do we think that looks like? And, and after we have that conversation, it may mean we look at this and say, Merrill Road's a higher priority, we need to pull stuff out, 'cause this is a level we think would, would be reasonable to do CIP funding for roads on a forward-looking basis.
Counsel Cowan.
Um, I'm comfortable adding the full three million, um, an additional piece that, uh, yeah, no, let's, I, I'd like to see it with the three million, and, and then, as we're talking about this next time, we can perhaps make sure that we're thinking about it in the perspective of some of the other standard cost increases that we guess are gonna be there, obviously, again.
Counsel Wyeth.
Yeah, I think we should keep, keep Merrill Road, and we should not touch the budget, we should, we're hearing from the constituents that the roads are important, and we see that the roads are falling in disrepair, so I do not think that we should eliminate anything for that budget. If we're on a fifty-year standard of, that's what we're gonna catch up on the roads, I mean, that, that's a long time. I mean, I think we should be better than that in trying to maintain our roads. If our population is gonna be growing over the years, and we're getting more and more traffic through, through our city, then we need to do a better job of upkeeping our roads.
Counsel Walker.
I, I would love to see what we're gonna retire down, so that we really know what kinda numbers we're gonna be looking at for next year and the year after, maybe the next five, for sure.
Yeah, so, Ms. Earl, could you have that for, for us for the team?
I'll do a debt service retirement over a ten-year period?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Other, other thoughts on this? Counsel Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't like using fund bounds, I don't, I'm not advocating cutting down anymore, but we don't know how much we're getting in the future. Some of the future money, I guess we could put towards roads, because that is one of the big factors I've been hearing, we all been hearing from our constituents, we gotta do something. But I can't agree to bonding outrageous after we just passed the city budget. I, I, I can't support too much more.
Other comments? Counsel Walker.
I got a question, Dan, the, the wall by BJ's, I think I saw you people working on that wall.
Uh, it's been, it's, it went out to bid, unfortunately, that was, that's a city wall. Um, it went out to bid, and bids were open last week, and actually came in, best-case scenario in terms of price, so that was great news, so, yeah, that road, that wall will be reconstructed this year. It was falling into the sidewalk, so, actually, some of the sidewalk money that was approved last year is going towards that.
Can I ask why we are responsible for that wall, when all their drainage is what's washing that wall out?
I, I, I asked the same thing. Unfortunately, that, the way, when that project was developed, um, the developer built that wall within the city right of way as part of the development, and it became the city's problem thereafter.
Yeah, so just so the counselors know, um, the, the standard that's applied is whether the retaining wall is within the right of way or not. And there's been a number of questions about this from people here over the last few months, and that's how, um, the city decides, it's basically, uh...
Unless there's a different agreement that exists.
Unless there's a prior agreement. So, I think that, um, this is an item that, um, city staff needs to make sure that the planning board is aware of, uh, when they're going forward, so that if, uh, plans come before them, and there's retaining walls near the roadway, that if, if the developer wants to build that, there's an agreement that they're going to maintain it, so the city just doesn't end up holding, holding the bag on that.
Counsel Milks?
Yeah, I think we need, I, I think we need to have a workshop just on the roads, because we're gonna be here for another hour at this rate, and we're, this is supposed to be a workshop about the CIP, and now we're talking about the roads, and how we're gonna, I mean, if that's what we're gonna do, okay, but, I mean, we really, this is a CIP discussion, this isn't a roads workshop. And so, you know, I think we need to, if we're gonna talk about what we're gonna do about the roads in the future, we have to schedule a workshop about the roads, and about, and have something to discuss that, that's what I think. I think we should stick to the CIP, this is CIP about this CIP. That's what I think. I think we should stick to the CIP. This is CIP about this CIP.
Other questions or comments by the council?
Just a question for the manager on timing of the CIP approval. I can't remember what the...
Yeah, so we've done, we're actually doing a little different this year. Normally, you would have passed this with your first and second reading of the budget. But we, we pushed that off. So, you, I think we'll have everything that we need to be able to put this for your next, your next council meeting, for first reading. And then, your second meeting in June will be your, your second reading for final approval. You know, we could go a little longer into that as well. It's just timing for us on working with our bond agent to make sure, when do we want to make sure we're hitting, hitting that market, which we tend to around October, I think.
Yeah.
And so, but this allows us to get everything in order so that we're, we're teed up for it.
Any further questions or comments by the council? If not, we'll close the work session in adjournment. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep. Anytime. It was. I misunderstood Phil. Well, I missed the end. So, they, when I left, we were winning. 5-4. And then, they ended up losing 6-5.